Thank you, and good morning, everyone. I'm Commissioner Mariela Smith. I'm the Vice Chair of the County Commission. I'll be leading the meeting today in place of our Chair, Commissioner Overman. And I'd like to, at this time, call the County Commission meeting to order and read the memo from our Chair Overman that says, unfortunately, I'll be unable to join today's meeting due to schedule changes that have taken place at the NACO Conference in Washington, DC. And please read the reason for my absence into the record. So, at this point, we'll have a roll call, please.
Smith?
Here.
Overman? Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation led by our Chaplain, Commissioner Stacey White, who is in the multipurpose room downstairs. Commissioner White, good morning, you're recognized.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you very much. We'll have the pledge, followed by the invocation. We'll begin with the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the young leaders in our community, these five young ladies behind me representative of that group. We thank you for our agricultural industry here in Hillsborough County, and we'll be celebrating that by kicking off the Strawberry Festival this morning. And, Lord, I pray that you'll guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. And as always, I pray for our first responders, members of our armed forces, pray that you will guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Well, thank you very much. And we have two special recognitions today. Both will be presented by Commissioner White from the multipurpose room. Commissioner White, please proceed.
I'd like to introduce some special guests this morning from the Florida Strawberry Festival who have joined us. We have Paul Davis, the President, Phil Waldron, the Chair, Tim Lovett, Vice President, Donna Keel and Lori Yarborough, Queen Coordinators, Kenley Cunnell, Queen, Madison Davis, First Maids, and court members Chloe Hopper, Bailey Blanton, and Tamea Williams. Welcome to all of you. This is a very special time of year, a sweet time, you can say. In just a couple of weeks, we will celebrate Hillsborough County's bountiful strawberry crop and all its history and significant economic impact. At the forefront of this celebration is the Florida Strawberry Festival. This is a major event, recognized as one of the best in the world. After making some necessary adjustments due to the COVID-19 pandemic last year, the 2022 Florida Strawberry Festival is better than ever. This is a testament to Mr. Davis, Mr. Waldron, Mr. Lovett, the entire board, and all the coordinators, vendors, volunteers, and organizations who give it their all every year. I want to thank everyone involved for making this a true showcase event and celebration in Hillsborough County. If you have never been, please go. I promise that you'll have the time of your life. Now, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I'm proud to present this proclamation. But before I do so, I just want to go off script for a moment. This is going to be my last Florida Strawberry Festival proclamation presentation because I term out this November. I believe it was Commissioner Al Higginbotham that championed this recognition every year. And I hope that the new District Four Commissioner will continue on and keep this tradition alive. Be remiss if I didn't just say that I've lived this queen in court experience as a parent, and you're truly leaders in our community. I've seen what it takes to earn a spot on this court with answering the spontaneous questions, the advertisement that you do, the interview process. There's so much that goes into it, and I just give you all a heartfelt congratulations. So without further ado, I'm going to read this proclamation into the record, and it reads, "Whereas Plant City is the winter strawberry capital of the world, with 11,000 acres of strawberries grown annually by members of the Florida Strawberry Growers Association. And whereas, since 1930, the Florida Strawberry Festival has united the community by bringing people together to honor farmers and celebrate the bountiful strawberry harvest, a $1 billion industry in central Florida. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival draws, entertains, and enlightens over 500,000 local residents and visitors from around the world each year, introducing them to Plant City agriculture, arts, businesses, horticulture, and industry. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival Board of Directors, Board Chairman Phil Waldron, President Paul Davis, and many local volunteers and civic organizations devote countless hours to the success of the event. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival has long been recognized as the number-one fair or festival in Florida, as well as one of the top 35 events in North America, a true destination where people can enjoy some of the world's top entertainment and delights. And whereas, 2022 Florida Strawberry Festival Queen Kenley Cunnell, First Maid Madison Davis, and Court Members Chloe Hopper, Bailey Blanton, and Tamea Williams serve as the event's goodwill ambassadors. And whereas, the theme "Number One for Fun" was selected to mark this year's 87th event, reflecting the festival's richly deserved reputation for wholesale family fun and excitement and uniting vendors, Future Farmers of America chapters, corporate partners, organizations, and exhibitors who craft parade floats and displays. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare March 3 through March 13, 2022, as Florida Strawberry Festival Days in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate the festival's rich heritage and enjoy the strawberry harvest that contributes so much to the community and the region. Executed this 16th day of February 2022, signed by all seven Commissioners." I'll be presenting this proclamation to you in just a moment, but before we do so, I'd like to invite the Queen up to the podium to say a few words and kick off the Strawberry Festival.
Thank you, Commissioner White. This is truly an honor to be here today. Our court is super excited to be here, our First Maid Madison Davis, our court members Bailey Blanton, Chloe Hopper, and Tamea Williams. We are extremely honored to be here today. We know that the festival is truly a celebration of the harvest of the strawberries. These farmers work so long, all year long, and so hard to have the strawberry festival and to produce these berries, and so we truly honor them and that we are representing them today, and so we're super honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite the Chairman Phil Waldron to the podium to say a few words about this year's festival.
Thank you, Commissioner White, Madam Vice Chair. We're really excited. This year is going to be a great festival. Last year, it was exciting, but this year is going to be great. Again, recognize the date, March 3 through March 13. We're going to have new entertainment this year, new food, fantastic entertainment. It's going to be great. We cordially invite all of you out here. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to a great festival season, and thank you so much for coming out and spending some time with us this morning.
Commissioner White, can you hear us down there?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I just want to say thank you very much, and thank you to our Strawberry Festival guests. On behalf of the board up here, we are delighted to be celebrating the Strawberry Festival's 87th year in our area. And, you know, it's one of the things that makes our area special is when we have these things. Nobody else has this strawberry festival like this. And I always enjoyed, Commissioner White, your presentation of this because of your deep ties and roots into this festival, especially with your own daughter and your experience with the strawberry court. So I know the whole board up here is grateful to be having this presentation and wants to wish the participants and the people that you've brought to us today a wonderful festival full of fun this year. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and they're all still here with me just off camera. They've heard everything you've said, and I know they appreciate those kind words.
And with that, we were ready for your next commendation.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. If I may just have a moment, just for the logistics of swapping out the crowds here, and I'll get the next one started. So, Madam Vice Chair, now I'd like to introduce the following special guests for this next recognition. We have with us Rafael Pizano, Robert Pizano's son, and a firefighter, paramedic with Tampa Fire Rescue. We have Louis Viera, Tampa City Councilman. Not sure whether or not tax collector Nancy Milan made it, but she certainly sends her best in her regards. We have with us Jose Pepe Prado, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue District Chief, Luis Laquinte, representing Senator Rick Scott's office, Sherry Denham, Regional Representative for the Office of the Governor, Marilyn Alvarez, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office Hispanic Liaison, Danny Alvarez has joined us this morning, and we have Ellie Rodriguez, Hillsborough County Hispanic Liaison, and of course, a former aide to Commissioner Al Higginbotham. Roberto Pizano's story is one of amazing strength, courage, and resolve. Driven by his love for freedom, he survived a nightmarish ordeal in a prison cell in his homeland of Cuba and came to the United States for a new life. He settled in Tampa, started a family, and became a respected member of the community. It is here that he continued his quest to help us fellow Cubans experience the liberty and freedom Americans hold sacred. It is my privilege to present him the following commendation. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Roberto Pizano on the 43rd anniversary of his release as a political prisoner from Cuba. Mr. Pizano was sentenced to life in prison after communism prevailed in 1959. For 18 years, he was subjected to inhumane treatment but refused to be defeated, guided by his firm belief that one day he again would be free. In February 1979, thanks to American advocacy, Mr. Pizano was one of 3,600 political prisoners who were freed, and shortly afterward made his home in the United States, settling in Tampa. With his freedom regained, Mr. Pizano began his life's work, seeking a free and liberated Cuba. He became an effective organizer, a widely respected resident and Hillsborough County employee, and a loving family man and father. Jose Marti once wrote that "Men of action, above all those whose actions are guided by love, live forever." Indeed, Mr. Pizano is a man of action whose values, passion, and love of freedom will endure forever. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Roberto Pizano for his remarkable strength and unshakable commitment to the ideals that all Americans hold high, and wishes him the best. Executed this 16th day of February 2022, signed by all seven Commissioners. Mr. Pizano, congratulations. You are a very brave and an inspiration to many people, and I'd like to invite you forward to say a few words at this time. Welcome.
I prefer my son a letter for me because my English is no good. I'm here this morning to say thank you to each of the Commissioners for Hillsborough County, for this honor which they bestowed upon me today, which at times I feel I don't deserve. My struggle has been always for my native land to have been what the United States is, a free country, a free country and a democratic country, where human beings have all the opportunities. But I would also like to state my gratefulness and say thank you to this great nation for having received us with open arms and offered me the rights that were taken from me in my native country by a tyranny that for more than 63 years have enslaved my native I thank each of you here today.
Councilman Louis Viera presented a similar commendation over at the city of Tampa and was instrumental in working with me to put this county proclamation, or commendation, rather, together. So, Councilman, I'd like to invite you to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you so much, Commissioner White, for bringing this forward. It's a great pleasure to be here today. The Pizanos, to me, aren't friends, they're family. Their story has always touched me. I remember the first day that I met them, and we immediately hit it off just on so many grounds, but they represent to me something that is unique about not only our city, but the United States of America, the refugee story. They, like my family, are political refugees from Cuba fleeing communism. Our city is home to so many refugees, whether it's from Venezuela, whether it's from Cuba, whether it's from Syria, whether it's from Afghanistan, all over the world. Their story for me is so very special. My parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandmother fled Cuba in 1960 fleeing the Castro regime. So for me, this is something that's very important. And I know Mr. Pizano's English is not the best, so I'll say something in Spanish if I make it. So I wanted to say thank you to the County Commission, and it's funny because I don't know what Mr. Pizano's religious beliefs are, but I can tell you this, whether or not he believes in God, God believes in him 110% because the hell that he went through, he got through because of his faith, because of his family, and because of God Almighty. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you again, Mr. Pizano. We're so proud to have you as a fabric of, part of the fabric of our community and of this great nation. I want to thank all of our recipients for joining us today and for everything they do to help make Hillsborough County the best county in Florida. Madam Vice Chair, with that, I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you. And again, on behalf of the board, I want to thank Mr. Pizano and his son for joining us, and thank Councilman Viera and all the others who helped to bring this proclamation together, certainly you as well, Commissioner White. It's a great opportunity for us to honor our Cuban residents here, and I say that as someone with Cuban heritage myself. And so I'm very grateful to be able to express solidarity with Mr. Pizano's lifelong goal and his fight of seeking a free and liberated Cuba that would match our American ideals of freedom and liberation in our country. And so thank you very much. Thank you all very much. And so with those last closing words, I just want to thank everyone for joining us today and for everything they do to help make Hillsborough County the best county in Florida. So, Ms. Wise, are there any changes to our agenda today?
Yes, thank you. We have one off-the-agenda item by Commissioner Kemp. This will be heard at 10:45, Item F2. This is direct staff in County Attorney's Office to take steps to further investigate pet rabbit sales and involve community stakeholders, including the Animal Advisory Committee, in formulating policy recommendations for the protection of pet rabbits and the regulation of pet rabbit sales in Hillsborough County. We have one item that has been deferred to March 2. This is Item A4. This was to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of county-owned land on Sheldon Road to the Affordable Housing Services Department. Item G1 will be heard now at 11:00 AM instead of 10:45, which is to receive a report regarding unmarked cemeteries and burial grounds in Hillsborough County. Several items for time certain, the first one being Item E1 at 10:00 AM, which is an appearance by Tom Morrison, counsel to the Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority, to discuss the application from H. Lee Moffitt Cancer Center and Research Institute and H. Lee Moffitt Cancer Center and Research Institute Hospital for not to exceed $88 million in bond financing. This is related to Item B2. And then Item B2, also at 10:00 AM, is the approval of such bonds of Series 2022A and 22B for the H. Lee Moffitt Cancer Center and Hospital, and to accept the financing documents as subject to review by counsel, related to Item E1. Item B3 at 10:15 is to approve an American Rescue Plan funding agreement with the Clerk of Circuit Court for $5,785,000 in the public health category of the American Rescue Plan, and to approve the appropriate budget amendment. Item B4 at 10:15 is the approval of American Rescue Plan funding agreements with Florida Health Sciences Center, Inc., doing business as Tampa General Hospital, also St. Joseph's Hospital, and the University Community Hospital for not to exceed $16.4 million, and to approve the appropriate budget amendment. Item B5 at 10:15 is to approve the American Rescue Plan funding agreement with Tampa Bay Thrives to provide American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, ARP funds, of up to $1,987,500 for the organization to respond to the public health emergency caused by COVID-19 by providing behavioral health programs to strengthen behavioral outcomes. Item F1 at 10:30 is Commissioner Hagan's item, to discuss options for suspending the accrual of fines resulting from the dispute over the appropriate use of an agricultural stand. Item F2, Commissioner Kemp's item at 10:45, to direct staff in the County Attorney's Office to take steps to further investigate pet rabbit sales and to involve the community stakeholders. Item G1 at 11 o'clock is to receive a report regarding unmarked cemeteries and burial grounds in Hillsborough County, 11:45, recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Wise.
Move approval?
Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Let's take a roll call. No, we can just, we can just record our votes today.
Actually, Commissioner White.
Motion carried 5 to 0.
Oh, that's, that's right. We can pass this 5 to 0. He's still in the downstairs room. He'll be joining us shortly. All right, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is public comment, and I'll read a few remarks before we begin. "The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. It is requested, however, at the same time when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally against any specific Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the online public comment forum found at hcflgov.net/speakup. The forum is open for public sign-up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting. An option is available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. Additionally, in-person speakers will be able to sign up on-site via kiosk or smartphone the day of the meeting. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online forum, an audio call-in number will be provided to you after the forum is received by the county. All speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, and telephone number on the online forum. This information is being requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups for both virtual and in-person public speaking opportunities for public hearings and public comments close at 9:00 AM on the day of the meeting. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which their requests to speak have been received. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis. The boardroom and the multipurpose room are designated for speakers only. Those who come to County Center to watch the meetings and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. Only the first 12 in-person sign-ups will be allowed in the boardroom for public comment. Anyone speaking in the boardroom must wear a mask. The multipurpose room will be available for those residents who signed up to speak after the first 12 people have registered, or for those people who cannot wear a mask due to a medical condition. Speakers are asked to leave the boardroom after sharing their comments with the board. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting, and will be unmuted after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. And so at this time, I'd like to ask our first speaker who has signed And so, at this time, I'd like to ask our first speaker who has signed up, and that would be Mr. Buddy Harwell. Mr. Harwell, you're recognized to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Buddy Harwell here, speaking for Balm. Hopefully, it's just a little glitch in the system, but so far, the new recycling program down here has not gone very well. Last two weeks, we have not gotten recycled picked up. It's picked up on Saturday. Monday, we called, they told us to put it back out on the roadway. It'll be picked up within 24 hours. It sat out there till the next Saturday, which didn't get picked up again. Once again, we called, they told us to pick it up, and glad to say it was picked up yesterday afternoon, but just want to let you be aware of this, and we'll let you know if we have any other issues in the area. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Your mic's not on.
Thank you, Mr. Harwell, and I'm sure your comments will be responded to by staff. Our next speaker is Barry Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, I have Mr. Lawrence signed up virtually. I may have him sign up in person, but I do not see him virtually right now.
He is in, you're Mr. Lawrence? We have him right here in the boardroom. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. I've asked fellow Bear's Grove supporters to please not speak today. I'm sure you've already had a lot on your agenda. I'm here to ask for the help and protection of our farm. The Code Enforcement Board refuses to acknowledge my protection under state agricultural laws, and they do not believe that my agricultural stand is an agricultural building. We have had an agricultural stand on this property since 1993 and have never had a problem. The Hillsborough County Land Development Code defines agricultural use of the land as this in the code. An agricultural stand, a permanent or temporary structure for the sole fresh fruits, for the sale of fresh fruits and vegetables, ornate plants, and other agricultural products. It further defines the use of the land under agricultural uses. The use of the land, buildings, or structures for such but is not limited to agriculture, agricultural stands, stables, private and public. It's hard to imagine the county can't recognize the agricultural use and exemption by the state when it's listed as such in their own development code. The Florida Right to Farm Act also defines a farm operation as means all conditions or activities by the owner which occur on a farm in connection with the production of a farm. These conditions and activities include, but are not limited to, the marking of farm products at roadside stands or farm markets. The non-residential Florida Building Statute also exempts us from any county or municipal code or ordinance. A non-residential farm building by definition means any temporary or permanent building that is used primarily for agricultural purposes and is located on land that is an integral part of a farm operation. Florida Building Code also exempts our farm stand and gives the sole right of non-residential farm buildings to the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to regulate. Bear's Grove believes that there can be a bright future for agriculture in Hillsborough County, and after reading the comprehensive plan for the unincorporated Hillsborough County signed by the county commissioners under agricultural general considerations, objective 29, in recognition of the importance of agriculture as an industry and valuable economic resource, Hillsborough County shall protect the economic viability of agricultural activities by recognizing and providing for its unique characteristics in land use planning and land development regulations. Also, objective number 30, recognizing that the continued existence of agricultural activities is beneficial to the county, and the county will develop, in coordination with appropriate entities, the economic incentives to encourage and expand agricultural activities. I don't believe finding a small farm for following state agricultural laws is in line with a county's comprehensive plan. Small farms and businesses already have an uphill battle. Please help us stop the fines and ultimately have them rescinded for Bear's Grove. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Hall, and she's virtual.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the bunny. I'm a volunteer with Suncoast House Rabbit Rescue and have personally been present for a number of rescues and it's a sight, I'm sure. I'm asking you to please reconsider the recent decision by Hillsborough County to use education as a solution for the problem of the sale of rabbits from pet stores. You're not going to be able to stem the tide of the greed of those places when they are making huge profits off of the cages and the feeding and the bottles and everything else that goes along with the sale of the bunnies. And I've personally experienced hearing a customer being told that if they buy a bunny and buy another bunny and they breed bunnies, that the pet store would buy them back, therefore perpetuating the neglect and abuse of hundreds of hundreds of bunnies. And I'm begging you, and I'm begging you, to please reconsider the report that was commissioned by you to see how many pet stores in Hillsborough County. Unfortunately, it came back with erroneous information. One of our volunteers went out and did an investigation alone and found that there are somewhere between 14 and 18 places in Hillsborough County selling bunnies, especially at Easter. Most of the time, they're underage, and they're sick, and they're not, it's just a bad situation. The rescues are overwhelmed, the SPCA is overwhelmed, we're all having to turn away bunnies that need our help, and it's breaking my heart. Please help me help the bunnies by stopping the sale of them from pet stores. I'm begging, please. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Sorry, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd just like to let Ms. Hall know that it is F2 on the agenda this morning, scheduled for a time certain at 10:45, I believe. So I'd like to let her know that that, just what she asked for, is on the agenda today.
Great, thank you. And next is Ms. Parham. Miriam Parham.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm glad you're still considering the topic of banning the sale of rabbits. I know that you're thinking about education, but I believe you're still considering a ban during the Easter season. I do represent, as I've shared before, an all-volunteer nonprofit group, Florida Voices for Animals, with almost 4,800 members in this area, and our mission is to educate about animal abuse and exploitation in all aspects of the sale of rabbits involved all of that. As it's been noted, the breeders can be like puppy mills with a lot of extreme conditions and temperature and cages and outdoors. And then, the transporters can also be very, very stressful for them as they're packed into small cages, just like little chicks and ducks also are for Easter. And then, of course, the retailers where, even if it's clean, those wire cages are very painful and uncomfortable to their little tender feet. But then, of course, the, finally, the buyers who even unknowingly know much about the care of rabbits, and they're viewed more as toys for the little kids who don't know how to handle them and can end up, as I've shared before, getting scratched and even bitten. If they actually are scared enough, they can do that. So it's very, very sad to hear of all the other things, you know, they get sick, you can't always tell when they're sick, and they can break their backs if they're not handled correctly. But the bottom line is, is that they often are unwanted after a short period of time. So we wonder what's going to happen to all those bunnies that are sold this Easter. My understanding is all the shelters are full, there's no place for them to go, and they can end up getting dumped where, again, they can suffer greatly outdoors in extreme temperatures where they don't know how to survive. They're not, they're domestic rabbits, they're not native wild rabbits. And another concern is there's some coming from out of state, and they could actually have a highly contagious virus, RHDV2. I've heard from the veterinarians, and there's been two cases outbreaks in Florida. And if they're suppliers from out of state, they could be coming across the straight lines, and then when they're released, they also will hurt our native rabbits. So this is really, you know, a very serious concern. So I'm hoping that we will move forward and join counties like Orange County and DeSoto County and many municipalities, including Key West, and states like California. And, you know, our goal is to go statewide, and we're not going to stop till this is stopped because there really is no outlet for the unwanted ones. Their lifespan is very short, so, indoors and outdoors, too, if they're not wild animals that know how to survive and that. So again, I just ask you that you keep this into consideration and proceed, at least with a ban for Easter sales and hopefully for a total state ban or county ban, and then hopefully we'll go for a state ban. So thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
That was our last speaker on the agenda items, so now we'll move to the speakers for the off-the-agenda items. A general public comment, and we have Ms. Christine Schroeder for that.
Good morning.
Good morning. You're recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Christine Schroeder. I live in the Somerset subdivision in Bloomingdale, and I am before you today to talk about the poor condition of our sidewalks. Our sidewalks are dangerous and a hazard for anyone who tries to navigate our neighborhood. I use a wheelchair and a scooter for mobility, and I'm forced to roll in the road to visit a friend or to walk my dog. I can't even navigate the sidewalk in front of my own house. We also have several residents in our neighborhood who use either a cane or a walker or a wheelchair like me, and they must also walk or roll in the road because of the buckling and the heating. Some sidewalks are four-six inches raised, even severe pitching of the concrete on the sidewalks. I even heard from a neighbor recently that their grandchild had fallen and gotten pretty banged up by tripping on the sidewalks. I have been in communication with Public Works for nearly two years now to try and get our sidewalks repaired, and to date, the only attention really we receive is to have reflective tape placed where the sidewalk is raised and uneven. And I was told that it's kind of a first-come, first-served basis for repairs, and when I asked when our first complaint was registered, they told me that for our Somerset neighborhood, it was registered, recorded in 2012 was the first complaint for our sidewalk. I continued on, tried to press on to get things taken care of. I did receive notification this past fall that we are not on our list for repairs for fiscal year '22 or '23, and I don't feel like that is acceptable, which is why I reached out to Commissioner White and why I'm also addressing you here today. I am the president of the HOA for our neighborhood. I also sit on the Board of the Bloomingdale County District. I really love the community. We have lived here since 2005, and we chose to stay here after my husband retired from the military. And I'm just really asking for some help today. If you could help me and my neighbors and find some funds to address the dangerous situation that we have so that the whole neighborhood could enjoy the sidewalks, and it would be safe and enjoyable for everyone. And I certainly appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schroeder. And Ms. Wise, can we have somebody contact her and help walk her through the sidewalk referral program and see to that issue? Thank you. I'm getting a nod, yes. So Ms. Schroeder, you should be contacted sometime soon about that.
I'm in.
Oh, Commissioner White. I looked for you, and I didn't see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually had some comments prepared for the future issues section of the agenda, but I'll go ahead and just touch on them now. I don't know that Ms. Schroeder mentioned it, but she herself is disabled, and she's having a difficult time navigating throughout her neighborhood in her scooter or wheelchair. As she mentioned, I did meet with her recently, and we just spent millions repairing sidewalks in the Bloomingdale community, but this small neighborhood that's tucked in the back of Bloomingdale seems to have gotten missed. If we are able to take care of this community, it should reduce service calls for years to come because it would just complete that small missing piece of the puzzle. So I would ask that staff consider reprioritizing these sidewalks based upon the information that we've heard this morning. Certainly, I think there's been some legitimate safety issues concerned, concerns raised, rather, and certainly an issue with someone with a disability having trouble getting around. So I would ask staff to consider reprioritizing these and to see if funding might be available in the current budget to make the necessary repairs.
And this takes us, I think we're complete with public comment today, seeing no other members of the public who are signed up to speak. So at this time, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Kemp, seeing no discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. That takes us to Ms. Wise to tell us what's next.
Thank you. Since we have a little bit of time before the 10 o'clock time certain, we can move to the regular agenda. The first item is item B1. This is to approve a list of projects for submission to the Hillsborough County Transportation Planning Organization, and John Patrick will take us through this agenda item.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good morning, Commissioners. This agenda item is a request for approval of staff-recommended projects for submission to the Transportation Planning Organization for their upcoming transportation improvement plan update. As you know, Commissioners, the TIP, or the Transportation Improvement Program, is updated annually by the MPO Board, and there are seven, currently seven, projects on the MPO's unfunded priority list. Those are county projects. One project among them has received funding, and we will be requesting funding if this item is approved for design of the project. That's the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, no, the Bypass Canal, sorry, Bypass Canal Trail. And there are 16 new projects that we are asking to be added to that TIP priority list. Just to give you a, why this, brief on why this list is a little larger than the previous years, the federal government has approved the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act late last year, and this will provide funding, additional funding for local projects. One of the criteria for several programs on this Jobs Act, Infrastructure and Jobs Act, is that it be prioritized by the MPOs or the TPOs. So it is important that we make that list. Lot of the rules regarding this Infrastructure Investment Act is currently being finalized, and so we may come back based on the funding availability and ask to amend this list with additional projects. To give you a brief on the projects itself, there are 16, 16 new projects that we are asking to be put on the list. Ten of them are in the most underserved communities as identified by Plan Hillsborough in their nondiscrimination and equity plan adopted last year. And six of the 15 roadway projects are also Vision Zero corridors that was identified by the MPO in their Vision Zero action plan. So the projects as a whole are Vision Zero-focused, and equity is a major part of the list of projects. And also, we are requesting projects that are under PDNE right now, which has been funded for PDNE, but we don't have money for construction. These are These are also Vision Zero focused projects. So, those are the projects that we have. We are also asking for including the Upper Tampa Bay Trail project. We have, we are completing the PDNE study, and I think we will be ready to receive construction funding if the PDNE gets approved. So, those are your list of, the list of total 16 projects that are in your backup table, two of your backup, and table one of your backup is the list of projects that's already in the TIP list of projects. And you also have a map that shows the locations of these projects in your backup. With that, Commissioners, I am available for any questions. Otherwise, I ask for your approval to be the list of projects be transmitted to the TPO.
Move approval. Thank you. Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp and second by Commissioner Myers. And Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just want to point out just a couple of things about this. One, that not everyone may be aware of, but many of us who serve on the TPO are aware of our Transportation Planning Organization, is that we've had a record number by a far shot, most unfortunately, of deaths, pedestrian, bicycle, car crash deaths in Hillsborough County. We've been for many, many years, we've come in second in the nation per capita for these incidents, and this year, we increased by 20%, which is shocking, and 255 people died in Hillsborough County, five each week. So, I'm, so it's so important that we find and get onto these Vision Zero projects as soon as possible, and I'm, this is good news that these are in here. It's really important. It's life-saving kinds of design changes. I'm also very, very happy to see the work that's being made, progress that's being made on the Upper Tampa Bay Trail after more than a decade of it remaining status quo, and we've had numerous citizens and residents to ask us to please complete and connect up the trail, which connects up the trail to the trail system throughout the state, and the trail system going across, the trail going across from the East Coast to the West Coast, the first one in Florida. So, this is great news, and I want to thank our department, our county administrator, for the work that's been done to move this forward, and so I'm very happy to support this this morning.
Thank you. I share your sentiments about prioritizing the Vision Zero improvements, hoping that we can bring that number of deaths and injuries on our roads down. It's been going up, up, up. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a vote. Please record your vote.
Motion, motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is Item B6. Scott Stromer will present this item for procurement. This is for the Gibsonton area septic-to-sewer conversion program. And then also, if you have questions relating to the program itself, George Cassidy and Beth Chanel, let me answer those questions as well.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B6 is asking the board to approve and execute the first modification to an agreement with Wade Trim Incorporated for continued design, construction oversight, and related services associated with the Gibsonton area septic-to-sewer conversion program for the Water Resource Department, additional cost of $12,476,912, which increasing the project cost from one point, approximately 1.8 million to 14.2 million, using funding from the American Rescue Plan. This modification adds land acquisition services, public outreach, final design permitting, and construction and engineering, and inspection services for the conversion of existing private septic systems to a new vacuum sewer system, and replacement of the existing water mains in the Gibsonton area. As part of the original award for professional services, Wade Trim Incorporated committed subcontracting a minimum of 10% of its ultimate fees to disadvantaged businesses, which remains in effect. Up to this point, approximately 2.43%, or about just a little over $38,000, has been subcontracted to disadvantaged businesses, as the initial award included only preliminary engineering and planning activities, which don't generally include specialty services that are typically performed by disadvantaged businesses. The original award contemplated future phases of the work, which would take the project from preliminary design and planning to final design and construction oversight. Wade Trim remains committed to meeting its contractual obligation to subcontract a minimum of 10% of its ultimate fees, or one point, just a little over $1.4 million of the new contract total, to disadvantaged businesses, now the specialty firms will be required to finish the design and provide other supportive services. With that, Procurement Services does recommend approval, and as the county administrator said, Beth Chanel, the Director for Water Resource Department, and George Cassidy, the Assistant County Administrator for Public Utilities, are both available to answer questions about this important project.
Thank you. Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kent, second by Commissioner Cohen. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
I'll just, I was trying to hit my button, it wouldn't. I just want to say it's a great day.
Yeah.
That this is happening, and I know, especially, I'm surprised, Commissioner Smith, that you didn't speak up or get up and cheer and do cartwheels or something, because this is, this is great news that in, that we're finally moving again after decades on converting our low-pressure inadequate sewer systems in both Ruskin and Wy Mama to full-service, reliable systems in those areas, as well as all the, I think there are some, you know, 80,000, I can't remember the number of homes anymore that have gone in the urban service area in Hillsborough County without the sewer and wastewater, wastewater, water system, and we are looking at a significant number of those throughout the county now, Town and Country, the university area, Wy Mama, Ruskin, and Gibsonton, and that's not the end of it, just the beginning, but that's the beginning that is happening after several decades of not investing in that area.
Thank you. Yes, I am very excited, of course, and it's 26,000 houses inside the urban service area.
26,000, thank you.
In, in, you know, longstanding communities from Gibsonton to Carrollwood, to parts of Brandon, and of course, the terribly outdated low-pressure sewer system in Ruskin and Wy Mama has been preying on my mind since well before I got here, so I am delighted to see this moving forward. And Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Yeah, you know, I share your enthusiasm for this, and I just want to remind everybody that particularly in the areas that are low-lying and are near the coast.
Yeah.
These, every one of these septic tanks is an individual piney point waiting to happen, and the faster we can do this work, the better. This is an enormous step forward. Commissioner Kemp, you were so enthusiastic. You were talking about the next item being Wy Mama and Ruskin. This one is Gibsonton, and it's a long, long overdue investment in a community that has often expressed feeling left behind, and this is going to bring them way into the 21st century by actually hooking up them up to the sewer system like everybody else.
In fact, like Ruskin and Wy Mama, Gibsonton has been missing out on commercial development in their town center, and I just recently was talking to a pastor down there and another community leader who were pointing out that a prime piece of real estate on Highway 41 went to, you know, some warehouses or something instead of the kind of businesses that they hope to see in their town center, because you can't build a little restaurant or many different kinds of businesses if you don't have a standard, modern, first-world, force main sewage. So, you know, this is really an economic benefit for Gibsonton to be, to be doing this, but, and also, of course, as you point out, it's a huge source of pollution for the bay, particularly on the, on the coast. Whenever there's not necessarily a hurricane, but a rain event rinsing out the drain fields into the bay. So, yes.
Yeah, and I would be remiss if I didn't express the board's appreciation to Congresswoman Castor. I know that's been mentioned before. She's been so helpful in getting us money for this, and also for the money for this in Town and Country. So, I know the residents in that area appreciate it as well.
Absolutely. It's really helpful to have people in Washington, a Congresswoman like, Congresswoman Kathy Castor, who understands our local needs and can help us get funding for them. And now, we're ready for a vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
And if we could just continue to, Item B7.
Yeah.
As we're rolling along, and this is regarding Ruskin and Wy Mama, the lower-pressure sewer system and septic conversion program. Mr. Stromer will present it as well.
Item B7 is asking the board to approve and execute the first modifications to an agreement with Giffords Webster Engineers Incorporated for continued design, construction, oversight, and related services associated with the Ruskin and Wy Mama low-pressure system, low-pressure sewer system and septic conversion program for the Water Resource Department, an additional cost of $8,239,611.35, increasing the project cost from a little over 1.3 million to just a little bit over 9.5 million, using funding from the American Rescue Plan. This modification adds land acquisition services, public outreach, final design permitting, and construction, engineering, inspection services for replacement of the existing county system with a new vacuum sewer system, conversion of the existing private septic systems to the new vacuum sewer system, and replacement of the existing water mains in the Ruskin and Wy Mama areas. In the original award for professional services, Giffords Webster did not request the bonus points, and therefore was not obligated subcontract, any subcontracting work to disadvantaged businesses. I do want to mention that the selection of professional firms does not involve setting a disadvantaged participation goal. Instead, firms are offered the opportunity to voluntarily request points to help raise their final score in exchange for subcontracting a minimum of 10% of its fees to disadvantaged businesses, the process of which is prescribed in the county's minority and disadvantaged business operational procedures. Like the previous item, excuse me, like the previous item, the initial award only contemplated preliminary engineering and planning activities, which don't include some specialty services that are typically performed by disadvantaged business enterprises. Despite having no obligation, Giffords Webster has voluntarily committed to subcontracting a minimum of 10.7% or $771,713 of the new survey, design, permitting, and construction, engineering, project management work to disadvantaged businesses. Like the previous item, the original award contemplated future phases of the work, which would take the project from preliminary design and planning to final design and construction oversight, the latter of which are more conducive to disadvantaged business participation. With that, Procurement Services does recommend approval, and again, Beth Chanel and George Cassidy are available if the board has questions.
Move approval. Second. Thank you. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen, I think, be Commissioner Myers on that one, and Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And I'll just take the comments that I made last time and apply them here. Thank you for telling, I guess that's maybe why you didn't do the cheerleading and cheering on, but, but it's a great, as everyone's pointed out, great, it'll really make it possible for us to do the kinds of vision that we have for South County, and it's, it's a great day passing this.
Thank you. Yes, similarly to the Gibsonton business situation, Ruskin and Wy Mama have been really held back economically for not having a standard force main sewage system, and of course, much of Ruskin is on the water and contributing pollution through these septic drain fields. So, it's, it's really important, but it's really expensive. We've been trying to put together money, I know Commissioner Merman and I both put money aside from the BP funds towards this at one point, and then now we've got this wonderful opportunity with the American Rescue Funds coming from, from Washington, and thanks again to our Congresswoman. So, I'm thrilled. I, in fact, I worked with Congresswoman Castor when she was a commissioner, and I was a citizen of Ruskin begging with our, our community leaders to get something done. So, that's, it's been some time that this issue has been needing addressing. I'm really tickled to see it moving forward today. So, let's record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We can now move to the time-certain items. The first one is Item E1, and it is related to Item B2. This is a special appearance by Tom Morrison, counsel to the Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority. He's going to speak about bonds for the H. Lee Moffitt Cancer Center, and then separately, there'll be Item B2 to approve the item.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners, Ms. Wise. Tom Morrison, counsel for the county's Industrial Development Authority. I'm here to discuss with you this morning two separate bond issues of the authority. The first is called the Capital Improvement Cigarette Tax Allocation Refunding Bonds, H. Lee Moffitt Cancer Center Project Series 2022A, in an amount not to exceed $88 million. The second is called the Hospital Revenue Refunding Bonds, H. Lee Moffitt Cancer Center Project Series 2022B, in an amount not to exceed $20 million. Now, these are refunding bonds intended to refinance outstanding bonds of Moffitt that were issued by the city in 2012. So, being refinancing, there are no new buildings being built, no monies being applied to capital improvements. They're strictly going to refinance the existing bonds for the purpose of getting a much lower interest rate and achieving a very significant interest rate savings over time. The bonds are expected to be issued as fixed-rate bonds. We don't know the rate yet. That will, the pencils will be sharpened as we get closer to issuing the bonds. They'll be sold in private placements to Bank of America, who intend to buy them and hold them for their own portfolios. Our financial advisor, Public Resources Advisory Group, issued to the authority a report confirming that the transactions meet the county's guidelines for issuing of conduit bonds, and recommending that the authority approve the issuance of the bonds without any special conditions. The authority did that at its January 2022 meeting. Subsequent to that, we held, as required by law, a public hearing to take public comment that occurred on February 2nd, and there were no adverse comments received. So, that being said, and to try to keep it short, the authority approved it and recommends to you for elected official approval. I'll be glad to take any questions if you have any, and we have some folks from the Moffitt team here in case you have any for them.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
Move approval.
So, we've got a motion to approve by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Cohen. I see no questions from board members or discussion.
Well, that, that may have been premature, because we haven't queued up B2 yet.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And now, now on to B2, which is the approval of the bonds. And I would just like to note that we do have a bond counsel on the line, as well as the county attorney's office, Sam Hamilton, Yaksha Petrovic, as well as former county attorney Chip Fletcher, who is now a member of the Moffitt team, available.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yaksha Petrovic, Economic Development Department. This item is regarding the approval of bonds. This item is regarding the approval of bonds as discussed by Tom Morrison, IDA counsel, in the amount not to exceed $88 million. Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority Capital Improvement Cigarette Tax Allocation Refunding Bonds, Series 2022A, and $20 million Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority Hospital Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2022B, for H. Lee Moffett Cancer Center and Research Institute, Inc., and H. Lee Moffett Cancer Center and Research Institute Hospital, Inc. Based upon information provided by the Moffett and subsequent reviews by various county departments and agencies, as well as Hillsborough County's financial advisor and conflict bond counsel, and based on the public hearing as required, the staff recommends that the bonds be approved subject to review and acceptance of final financing documents by county's conflict bond counsel.
Now I'll move for approval of item B2.
Now I'll second it.
All right. Don't confuse me, I'm new. We've got a motion to approve by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Our next item is at 10:15 regarding American Rescue Plan items. If you would like to waive your rules to take this item a little bit early.
Move to waive the rule?
Second.
Motion to waive the rules by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Cohen.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise. Thank you. We have three items relating to the American Resc- oh, sorry.
I had some issues.
Yes.
It should have been unless Cohen was, I mean, Haggen was out, because I tried to get my vote in.
So.
I had some issues with my vote. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was five to zero because Commissioner Haggen stepped down.
Okay. We have three items relating to the American Rescue Plan. Tom Fessler will take us through these next three items. The first one is item B3. This is regarding the approval of agreement with the Clerk of the Circuit Court for $5,785,000. And he'll go through that one first.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. Yes, I just, before I go through the three items, I did want to give just a brief overview of American Rescue Plan Act funds and where we are as far as commitments. I'll put a summary up on the screen. As you can see, to date, we have about 92, we have $92.5 million committed to septic sewer projects and to stormwater projects. Under the revenue replacement category, the board has approved $40 million in repaving projects. Also under that area, we have $3.6 million for a fire station, fire rescue station alerting system, and $18 million for replacement of three fire stations. In addition to that, the board has approved us to have $10 million worth of reimbursement for staff efforts related to the pandemic. And we have a county program that was approved by the board for county department initiatives. We've currently started and kicked off that process to identify if there are any departments that have pandemic-related needs. Also, you've approved $2.8 million for an affordable housing acquisition and rehabilitation program. Our project, $5.5 million for a nonprofit safety net program that's being run by the Community Foundation. That program kicked off on January 31st. So far, it's been going very smoothly. We have about 90 applications that have been submitted for that program so far. In addition to that, you have also committed to $5 million for, to extend some food service contracts that started under CARES Act funding. Today, I'm going to bring to you three additional items for consideration, and with that, I will go through each one of those. The first item that I have, item B3, is asking you to approve an agreement with the Clerk of the Circuit Court for $5,785,000. That item is, was not part of necessarily the original plan, investment plan that the board approved. However, these are needs that are pandemic-related and are consistent with the guiding principles that were included in the investment plan that you adopted on September 1. The specific projects that will be funded with this will be $3.5 million to modernize a data-sharing system between justice system partners, which includes the Clerk of the Circuit Court, the public defender, the state attorney, the sheriff's office, and the 13th Judicial, and the Florida Department of Corrections. There's $975,000 of this to expand the public's online access to records maintained by the clerk by accelerating the digitization and management of records maintained that are currently maintained in paper, microfiche, and microfilm formats. The third item is $600,000 to enhance customer experience and methods used to renew driver's licenses, to pay traffic citations, and for other fines and fees. And then finally, there's a $710,000 project to strengthen security for remote access. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fessler. I see no questions, comments?
Move approval? Separately, or are we going to move? Okay, I'll move this item. I can tell you from many years' experience with the clerk's office that these are great investments for the county to make at this time.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear from that experience.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
I vote yes on the item.
Thank you.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. We're going to have to use some American Rescue Plan funds for Commissioner Myers' tablet.
Commissioners, my next item is item B4. I do want to mention, I should have mentioned that if you do approve the items that are on the agenda today, you will have approved $206.6 million of projects out of the $285.9 million of ARP funds that are available. Item B4 today is asking you to approve ARP funding agreements with Tampa General Hospital for $7.5 million, St. Joseph's Hospital for $3.5 million, and for University Community Hospital for $5.4 million. Tampa General Hospital is offering a $10 million match. St. Joseph's is offering a $3.5 million match of the funding, and University Community is offering a $6 million match of our funds, of the county's funds. In addition, the Tampa General Hospital agreement does have a provision in it, $5 million is available to Tampa General Hospital, but up to another $2.5 million for a total of $7.5 is available on a matching basis, subject to the City of Tampa matching the additional $2.5 million. And this item also has with it a budget amendment of $16.4 million to appropriate funds from ARP reserves. We do have representatives from each of the hospitals here to respond to any questions.
Move approval?
Thank you.
Second.
County Administrator.
I'm sorry, and I meant to say this as we were introducing this item. The healthcare systems in our county have been such an integral partner throughout this pandemic, and we are so grateful for their support, not only for the services they've provided, but also the education they have provided to us in decision-making, together with the Florida Department of Health. And so I just wanted to say that little preamble as we go into and working together to continue to provide the needed healthcare system, the needs in this community.
Absolutely. We do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Cohen, and now we'll have discussion starting with Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, I just wanted to, as well as the nature of this is obviously extremely important with the pandemic that we faced and what the local, with Tampa General and the local healthcare providers all, in the next several motions are listed for, both in mental health and physical health, it's all very significant in what, how we move forward here. Advent Healthcare, what I'm looking at, and St. Joseph's as well for these funds. But I'd also like to, I feel as though the county administrator, Ms. Wise, has very much vetted this, looked at it carefully, explained to us, and communicated how the allocations were arrived at, and specifically what the programs were. So I just, and I know other staff are probably working with you as they do so, but I think it's been carefully crafted and well decided, determined, so I'd just like to thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
Actually, Commissioner Kemp, I agree with you completely. I was going to say the same thing, and I was going to specifically point out and appreciate the fact that the way that the county administrator structured this, much of this will be from us, but there will be the opportunity, in Tampa General's case, to get more money if they're able to also secure matching funds from the City of Tampa. And it's my understanding that all of this will be considered by the legislature when they make an additional allocation to what Tampa General Hospital is building out. So all in all, really a wonderful example of all the governments working simultaneously to improve healthcare delivery in Hillsborough County. So that's really a good thing. So thank you.
Very good discussion. Ms. Wise, did you have another remark on it?
I just wanted to also recognize Jean Early, who has worked so closely with all of our healthcare providers.
Thank you. I just have one question. Mr. Fessler, you remarked on, after this item or after all three items, we will have spent how much out of, how much total ARP funds?
You will have committed to $206.6 million in projects out of $285.9 million in available funds.
And that's after all three of these, then?
That's correct. After, if these are approved, that would be the total.
Thank you very much. And with that, we've got a motion from Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And one last one here, B5.
One last one, and this next one is item B5, and this is for Tampa Bay Thrives, and Mr. Fessler will go through this one as well. We know that mental health concerns and substance abuse have also been escalated during this pandemic, and this item relates to that.
Yes, Commissioner. So item B5 is asking you to approve an ARP funding agreement with Tampa Bay Thrives in the amount of $1,987,500, and also to approve a budget amendment to appropriate those amount of funds from ARP reserves. The agreement calls for a behavioral health program to strengthen behavioral health outcomes for depression, anxiety, and substance abuse disorder, with a focus on improving early intervention, access, and awareness in order to be able to provide care and treatment for Hillsborough County residents impacted by COVID-19. The agreement will be in effect until August 31st, 2024. And there are, Tampa Bay Thrives is offering a $2.3 million match.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen, and seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We have a few minutes still, so I'm going to switch back to the regular agenda, if okay, to item B8. And Kim Byer will take us through this item. She is going to speak about the Material Recovery Facility, MRF, as we speak to it. But also, it'll give Ms. Byer an opportunity to speak a little bit about the change in the haulers that have occurred during this recent time period.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kimberly Byer, Soloway's Department Director. We're asking you to approve item B8, which is to approve a budget amendment resolution to realign $3 million within the FY '23 Soloway CIP from Project C54075, Resource Recovery Facility Improvements, to C54079, Hillsborough County Material Recovery Facility, or MRF. This budget amendment will start the procurement process for the construction of a county-owned and privately operated material recovery facility on county property adjacent to the Falkenburg Resource Recovery Facility. This facility will provide numerous benefits to the county, including ensuring long-term recycling processing capability, providing more control of the materials accepted in the existing curb-side recycling program, as well as providing recycling capability for our regional partners and commercial businesses. This facility will also include an educational center to offer tours to schools, community groups, and the public as a means of showcasing the county's investment in sustainability. The budget amendment will realign funds between the adopted CIP projects with a net change of $0 to the overall Soloway CIP budget. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
Thank you. I see no further dis- oh, wait, but I do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that it's kind of amazing, the transition that we have had in the last month with our waste hauling companies. I did not expect it to go so smoothly. I know we did have one comment by Mr. Harwell this morning, and I'm sure that the staff is already on top of it, but it's, it's a very amazing transition that's happened, and I just want to recognize Ms. Byers and Mr. Cassidy. You know, I know that they did all hands on deck in preparation, have worked many, many long months, so good job, and when you're on here, and the work, it looks like this has been achieved very well, and I did not expect it to go so smoothly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, you know, I have to say too, that previously and throughout this transition, I have been very impressed with the commitment to public, public service, to treating our residents as customers, and to the real passion from Ms. Byers down through all the ranks, every time we've had complaints, to be really on top of those and be addressing them. So just kudos on top of kudos there. So with that, we've got a motion on the floor. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
And we have one final regular agenda item. This is item B9. This is to authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with Tampa Bay Water for water withdrawal in the South Hillsborough County service area. Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Smithy both asked about this item as it relates to Tampa Bay water and wanted to speak to the board about this. George Cassidy is here for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Wise, and good morning, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. Item B9, we're asking the board to authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with Tampa Bay Water, which we will bring back to the board at a later date for your consideration and approval, for additional water supply in South Hillsborough County. This is a unique agreement, a unique project, insofar as withdrawal in South County that Tampa Bay Water is proposing is made possible through our recharge program. Tampa Bay Water is proposing is made possible through our recharge program, our South Hillsborough Off for Recharge Program, which we commonly refer to as SHARP. Tampa Bay Water has shortlisted this project for consideration, among a couple others that they're looking at for longer-term solutions to water supply across all of its member governments. This one certainly provides some short-term relief for the water supply down south, and we think it has merits. I do have a quick presentation that I would like to share with you, to give you some visual context to where the recharge locations are, and certainly where the water withdrawal opportunities are. So again, what is our SHARP program? Well, it began simply as a program that we wanted to leverage value out of that resource. Instead of discharging it to the bay, we wanted to use it for some beneficial purpose. And our recharge certainly, first and foremost, creates a barrier to saltwater intrusion to the inland freshwater supplies. It improves groundwater conditions. One of the hydraulic features of this recharge program is, as we're injecting water into this non-drinking water aquifer, it actually helps to improve groundwater levels inland. As I said, it leverages value from our reclaimed water, instead of discharging it and losing that value. And ultimately, this program will help us meet the requirements of Senate Bill 64, which includes a non-discharge requirement within the next 10 years. So Tampa Bay Water, as you are all familiar, our South County water demand has increased significantly over the last couple of years, and Tampa Bay Water has been looking for solutions to that demand need. The withdrawal opportunity that we have in front of us is made possible singularly by our recharge activities. Without the recharge program, you do not have withdrawal options available. The red dots that you see are existing and planned wells, recharge wells, that kind of hug the water line of Tampa Bay. They're all west of I-75, and it shows you, generally speaking, how we want to dot the coast with these recharge wells to protect, again, our inland water supply. The star, the blue star, is actually, the water withdrawal proposed location is our Agmar property. You recently approved Water Resources and ELAP purchase of this property, formerly agricultural site, strawberry tomato fields. Water Resources has a nice-sized portion. Tampa Bay Water is working with us right now, working with us right now to that property as well as ELAP, to strategically locate some of these water withdrawal wells. So this is a challenging agreement. The terms of the agreement are challenging, and why? Well, number one, you know, we're a partner with Tampa Bay Water, and this project is strictly to serve our residents and our customers in South Hillsborough County. So we've got a vested interest in making something happen with Tampa Bay Water to give us these additional supply opportunities. As Tampa Bay Water normally approaches a project, they bond the capital improvement, which requires then that they have a 30-year commitment on the monies that they spend to build infrastructure. What does that mean to us? Well, we are being asked to enter a 30-year agreement with them for continued recharge. Remember, I said the withdrawal is only made possible by continued recharge. And that would be okay, with the one exception that I just feel that there's going to be a point in time where there may be a more valuable opportunity to use our reclaimed water, whatever that might be. Locking into a 30-year agreement could ultimately limit us, or possibly hurt us, with opportunities that we don't even know what would be out there yet. So we're going to try and negotiate a good value to the commodity for the continued recharge. Tampa Bay Water is proposing that they're going to pay us on a dollar per thousand gallons of recharge for the amount of water that they pull back out of the ground for our drinking water purposes. We're not real close on the value. Staff is continuing to push for the highest value of credit that we can possibly achieve. And we'd also like Tampa Bay Water to consider and explore some alternative terms, some alternative agreement terms, that would maybe take it from a 30-year down to a shorter term, just so that we can get over the next, say, five to 10 years of significant need for water supply down south, until larger solutions are available. And with that, I am available for any questions that the board may have. We're recommending authorization to negotiate this contract.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to kind of set the table a little bit. Commissioner Cohen and I have been in the trenches at Tampa Bay Water, representing Hillsborough County in our interests. And it was actually Commissioner Cohen who suggested, if you all recall, coming back to the board, so that when we're over there negotiating, when Mr. Cassidy is negotiating, they can do that with the sense that they have the full backing of our county. And so, you know, I really want to support that in general. But I'd like to speak to a couple of the specifics, but where we're at is that Tampa Bay Water hired a, I'm sorry?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Not yet. Yeah, if you don't mind, I just want to introduce the matter. And so we have, did you want to make a motion? Is that what you're telling me?
I did move approval originally. But, and then, yeah, right, right. And then we were, and then you were just...
Okay, thank you. I don't understand why I was being interrupted, but the point is that what has happened is that Tampa Bay Water hired a consultant to determine this, the value of these, the credits for our reclaimed water. And of course, this is Tampa Bay Water's consultant. And so when they are pricing the water, they have, for one thing, determined that they can't actually determine if anybody is getting a value out of these credits, how much to deduct for that. So they arbitrarily are saying, well, let's just deduct 50% for anybody who is getting other value for their credits. Well, anybody who ever uses their reclaimed water in this way is going to be getting the value of not dumping it into the bay. And it's, so it's very, very arbitrary to say, we're just going straight down to 50% off the top of what the value of these credits would be. So the, you know, I just want to make sure that we empower our staff to be negotiating, and our county to be negotiating a value that makes sense to us, because we, you know, we all want to partner, all the member governments want to partner with Tampa Bay Water. But that means that no one partner feels taken advantage of, or feels like they're selling something too low. So, you know, without that sense of everybody being treated fairly and getting a good deal, Tampa Bay Water would be threatened. So in order to keep it strong, we all need to feel like we're getting a good deal out of this, and it's very important that we end up this agreement feeling that way. Besides the value of the credits, the 30-year commitment is much too long, much too, much too long, as Mr. Cassidy said. And so, you know, I'd like to send him forward with not only the backing of our board generally, but the understanding that we agree with the specifics, that the 30-year timeline is too long for us to commit to, given that, I mean, we, there are other options we might have for this. So I'll end with one question for Mr. Cassidy, or, I don't know, maybe it's Christine, but let's start with Mr. Cassidy. How do we go forward from here in the negotiations? Is it Tampa Bay Water's consultant and attorneys against Mr. Cassidy, or do we have other people helping with the bargaining negotiations in this?
Thank you, Commissioner. So Tampa Bay Water's general manager, Chuck Carden, and I have had some very, very good discussions and some very robust conversation on, you know, what we could possibly do. And certainly Beth Chanel has been a part of that. I'm hopeful that we can, we can have a meeting of the minds on what the terms and the alternatives could look like. And at that point in time, we're going to need to get certainly our county attorney, and Vivian and Hank have been engaged with this, and so we'll get to the place where we craft an agreement with them and their attorneys. So that would be, that would be the path that I see.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for laying it out. This is a very difficult situation, and one of the reasons that we wanted to bring this to the board is because Commissioner Smith and I are really in an awkward situation on this board, because, and I'm going to direct this to the county attorney, maybe not today, but maybe for some guidance going forward. The way that this is all playing out, the interests of Tampa Bay Water and the interests of Hillsborough County are not necessarily going to be exactly aligned. We're in a situation where the county and Tampa Bay Water are negotiating with one another over price, essentially. And we're going to be asked to vote at Tampa Bay Water on setting the price from Tampa Bay Water's point of view while they negotiate with Hillsborough County. And it was very important to us that we empower our staff as a board, so that Commissioner Smith and I understand exactly where we stand vis a vis how Mr. Cassidy has been instructed. And my question to the county attorney is, how does that inform us in our voting as we move forward? And, go ahead.
So Commissioner, you know, certainly you are the representatives of the county, so I'm not seeing an immediate issue with you expressing the needs and the negotiation, negotiating position of the county. But we'll be happy to work closely with you as this develops. It sounds like you're at the early stages, and we certainly understand the process and that there will be the need for drafts of agreements, and hopefully, hopefully, the parties can work this out. But it's really not any different from any other situation where we're trying to represent the county's best interests, what, in this case, it just happens to be with another quasi-governmental entity.
And, you know, some, the member governments of Tampa Bay Water, there, I don't want to say there's friction, but there is friction, because essentially Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa have all the water, and it creates an interesting dynamic in terms of the representatives from Pinellas and Pasco, and how they feel about these projects and what they might mean going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And again, I'm just going to recognize our staff. Mr. Cassidy, Ms. Chanel, I think have done an excellent job in the background on kind of briefing us and explaining at length, and being there to explain this. It's a really complex and difficult, and I know it's a struggle sometimes to speak to everything that's involved in that. I appreciate it. I've been, I was on Tampa Bay Water for a year. I'm very grateful that Commissioner Smith moved in at that time, and so it's a big, heavy lift, and it's gotten in, when I was there, it was every other month, but it was still, it was just starting to brew these issues. And Commissioner Cohen, you're, you both are doing an excellent job representing Hillsborough County and, as well as our staff, and so I'm totally there supporting this. And I do think there are difficult dynamics with this and the structure, and, you know, Tampa Bay Water was put in place amid difficult circumstances of counter suits on water throughout the region, and it was a big problem to solve. But thank you for keeping us informed, for educating us with the issues, both of our representatives, as well as the staff, as we move forward. And I think the, and I'll, just for the record, one of my biggest concerns that I put forward, whether we're injecting our, and I know this is, you know, I've heard various things, I read up on this, but whether we're injecting this water to prevent saltwater intrusion, bring up our water pressure, or how we're using it, I just have an abiding concern about the pharmaceuticals and hormones in this water. The, I know it's treated 96th percentile, I think, one of the highest in the nation, but I still, and I think that's probably with the public, a lot of also where concerns lie as we move forward. I know that this isn't relevant to this discussion at this time, but I always like to just put that concern out.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'll be real brief. I just want to thank Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Cohen for not only representing Hillsborough County, but for protecting our interests and literally battling for our county and residents. Commissioner Smith and I spoke about this very briefly during the, at the MLK parade, if you remember. This may be one particular issue, but, I mean, I was on Tampa Bay Water for a couple of years, but I can tell you, our representatives have literally been fighting this fight against Tampa Bay Water for decades. And so I know what you're going through, and I just want to thank you for really going to battle and doing everything you can to protect, to protect us.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hagan. And I must say, we are very fortunate with our water utility staff, being so knowledgeable and so passionate and caring about the Hillsborough County's interests, and making sure that our water is clean. Our staff really holds higher standards than, I'm not going to name the places in the region, but really nearby places in our region, our staff holds very high standards for our water quality in Hillsborough County. And just to mention, since Commissioner Kemp brought it up, the injection of the highly treated reclaimed water at the coastline for the SHARP project is a much different thing than other injection programs. This is going literally where saltwater is intruding into the water table, so it is protecting this, it's creating like a bubble, protecting the inland water supply from saltwater intrusion. And meanwhile, where we're withdrawing it, way inland miles away in the Agmar site, is uphill for miles. There is, there is no way this, this water is, or the saltwater, is getting up there. Mr. Cassidy, did you want to, did you correct me if I said anything unscientific there?
You've been a wonderful student. You've got it, you nailed it.
Thank you. Thank you. So seeing no further discussion, I just want to make sure staff is hearing that you've got the full backing of this board as you go forward, particularly on some of the issues that you mentioned in this, in this item. So with that, please record your vote.
Commissioner Myers, can we have your vote? Voice? Voice?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We can go back. Sorry. Thank you. We can go back to our time-certain items. The next item is item F1. This is Commissioner Hagan's item regarding discussing options for suspending the accrual of fines resulting from a dispute over the appropriate use of an agricultural stand.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Board members, every board that I've been on has spoken about the importance of small businesses and the impact they have in our community. I think every commissioner on this board has defended independent and mom-and-pop businesses and how we should help protect them and help them prosper. Even our comp plan identifies incentives and objectives to specifically support and encourage agriculture. And through the years, we have even had task forces where recommendations were made on how to do this. Well, based on the 1,000-plus emails we've received over the last few days, I'm sure you've all heard of one particular independent or mom-and-pop business, Bears Groves, which has been in the middle of an ongoing code enforcement case that has grown to such an extent that it may result in this wonderful community asset shutting down. This fruit stand, agricultural at the core, has been operating successfully for decades right in the heart of Carrollwood. If you've reviewed any of the emails we've received, you notice that these customers are not just from the surrounding neighborhood. They come from every district throughout the county and into Pasco County. My parents shop there, my family are customers. In fact, I bought my Christmas tree there this year. When you begin to look into the background of this case, you quickly find that it's much more involved than one would expect at first glance. It's a case where an accruing fine of $200 a day that was put in place years ago and now stands in excess of $160,000. Once I started to make some inquiries, several things jumped out that I believe warrants our attention. First of all, there's legal history between Bears Groves and the county. And Ms. Beck was kind enough to send us the background on this. Secondly, Bears Groves has gone before the VAB for a remedy because some of their issues are beyond our purview and involve the property appraiser's office and green belt designations. That being said, our code and code enforcement are at the core of this problem. Now, I'm not here to question the position or any of the work of our staff or county attorney's office throughout this ordeal. They've simply been enforcing our code and judging by the legal outcomes. As usual, Rob Bresel and his team have been successful. But after reviewing all the information, it became very apparent that this is a case not unlike what we routinely see in our land use meetings, where our policies or code and common sense are not always aligned. And every commissioner knows what I'm talking about, where something makes sense on paper, but when it is applied in the real world, it either doesn't make sense or is punitive. In those cases, which are, again, typically mom-and-pop businesses, we always do everything we can to help them. Now, in this case, it's not as easy as simply making an exception for this business because the reality is, this situation may very well apply to other small, independent agricultural businesses throughout the county. So with that, I do have a couple of questions for staff. The first one, either for, I think it's for Dexter Barge. Dexter, are you present or virtual?
I'm here.
Okay. There you are, Dexter. Couple of very quick questions. What is the basis of the code violation and what's the case status?
So back in April of 2018, code enforcement received a complaint regarding issues at the property that's in question. They responded, conducted an investigation, and did find several violations. The property owner was cited for those violations.
Excuse me, could we get more volume, please?
Can you hear me?
I still find it a little low, but...
Okay. Is that better?
If you've yet, move closer to your mic and speak up, please.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's better.
Is that better? Yes. So again, the property was found to be in violation of several land development code items. Hillsborough County Code Enforcement Officers issued a notice of violation to the property owner, and he was given X number of days or months to come into compliance before it was referred to the code enforcement board, but I stand corrected, a special magistrate. September of 2018, a special magistrate heard the case and also found that the property was in violation. And at that point, he was given additional 90 days to come into compliance before the fine of $200 a day would start, as you mentioned, Commissioner. Today, the property still remains out of compliance, and that's where we are.
And I know you touched on this, so just want to be clear. Who determined the fine and who has the authority to stop or suspend those fines?
The special magistrate issued the fine. And in order for that fine to be halted or anything done with that fine, it would have to go back to the special magistrate.
Okay. Now, as I mentioned earlier, code enforcement has followed our code throughout this. That being said, Dexter, from a code perspective, do you have any objections with us reexamining our code and exploring if there's anything that can be done to help this business?
Absolutely not. I have no objections whatsoever in doing so, in doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Couple of questions for Adam Gormley. Is Adam...
Yes, sir. Adam Gormley here.
Thanks, Adam. I've got four quick questions for you. In one of the reports from the appellate court, it states that what Bears Grove essentially needs is to come into compliance. From your, from development service perspective, is that accurate?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. From what you know of this case, do you think there may be potential paths that Mr. Lawrence can pursue that would bring him into compliance?
Yes, I do believe there are several paths that could be pursued presently under current conditions.
Okay. Now, I'm not holding you to any particular solution, so don't take it that way, but based on, again, your understanding of this case, and other, and being potentially other avenues for compliance, is there potentially value in staff getting with the owner and exploring these options?
Yes, sir. I very much believe that there would be value in that fine, that having those type of conversations is generally a good way to resolve situations such as this. I think that would be very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. And the last question, and to be honest with the board, I forgot this, it's been so long. But back in May of 2012, I brought to the board a request from the Farm Bureau to update our regulations pertaining to agricultural fruit and vegetable stands. It seemed at the time the regulations were not keeping up with the changes within the industry as well as consumer needs. The motion at that time was twofold, to begin the process of revamping our regulations and to suspend any further code enforcement action until the policies were amended. And that motion passed seven to zero. Adam, do you recall that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Two more questions, and this is, I'm not sure if this is for Christine or for Rob As evidenced by the overwhelming support that we received, this fruit stand is beloved and it's close to shutting down, so I need to be 100% sure on the law and our options. At this time, does the B.O.C.C. have the authority to suspend any further accumulation of fines imposed by the code board or magistrate?
Commissioner, I'll answer initially, and then I'll ask Rob to supplement if I leave anything out. But under both Florida statutes and your ordinance, the board does not have that authority right now. It is, well, until the property is in compliance. It's based on the phrasing of the statute and the ordinance that its compliance is required first, and then you have broad authority. So, Rob, did you have anything to add to that?
No, Christine, this is Rob Bresel. That's essentially my understanding as well, that until the property comes into compliance, the board would not have the authority to suspend the fines.
Okay. That's very helpful. Last question. So who does have that authority?
The trigger is the compliance. And then the board and the code enforcement, you know, the statutes and the ordinances allow, you know, either the magistrate or the code enforcement board. In our case, I'm told that the code enforcement board has actually delegated some of the fine reduction authority to staff. So depending on the facts, it could be any of those entities after compliance.
Okay. But at this time, is my understanding that the magistrate, according to Dexter, has that authority to do it now?
Do you mean before the property's in compliance?
Yes.
That is not my understanding. Rob, can you add to that?
Yeah, I believe that full compliance is required before the fines could be suspended. And as Christine mentioned, the resolution of fines and settlement of fines has been delegated to staff, I think, under Joe Rose, Frank Strom and his group handled that. But my understanding of the law is that until the property is in compliance, there is no authority to suspend the fines. The magistrate's findings have been affirmed. So the magistrate's findings have been litigated, as you know, in multiple courts, all the way up to the Second District Court of Appeal. And the magistrate's findings have been affirmed at every level. So at this point, my understanding is, just as Christine mentioned, until the property is in compliance, there is no ability to suspend the fines.
You guys are clearly the legal experts, so I'm not going to question that. However, I just want to be, again, because so much is at stake, I don't, I want to be 100% clear. So the magistrate has the ability to authorize the fines, but he does not have the legal ability to suspend the fines until it's in compliance? And we're 100% sure about that?
Yes, Commissioner. And I can actually read to you from the ordinance which follows the statute, which provides that "A fine imposed pursuant to this part shall continue to accrue until the violator comes into compliance or until judgment is rendered in a suit filed pursuant to this section, whichever occurs first."
Thank you. Board members, as I mentioned before, there are a lot of elements to this matter. And again, it's not my intention to question or point any fingers at anyone. Everyone just did what they're supposed to and did it successfully. But if you walk this back, you'll find at the very heart of the matter, there exists some confusion, maybe even contradiction, in some of the policies stemming from both state and local government. So like we did 10 years ago, I think it'd be beneficial if we had our agricultural stand codes reviewed. This type of business is always under significant pressure, whether it's environmental, commercial, regulatory, economic, all the time while also having to operate a farm. In this case, Mr. Lawrence and Bears Grove face all these same pressures. Add all of that to the challenges that he's facing in order to come into compliance, it's going to take quite some time, months at a minimum. Even if we ultimately decide to alter our codes, that too will take time. When we did this in 2012, it took nearly a year. That continuing pressure and the ever-mounting debt would cripple Bears Grove and force this decades-old small business to fold, crushing thousands of its customers who absolutely love this place. Now, candidly, I wanted to suspend the accrual of fines today, but as staff and county attorney has informed us, we do not have that authority. So what I'd like to do is offer a motion. It's in three parts. First of all, that we move that staff review our agricultural fruit and vegetable stand regulations for potential changes and improvement similar to what was done in 2012. Secondly, that staff work with Mr. Lawrence to explore any potential avenues where Bears Grove can come into compliance. As Mr. Gormley stated, there are potential paths, and he strongly believes there's value in doing this. And then I would like to send a letter, even though, I guess at a minimum, to notify the special magistrate that we are, the board has taken this action in an attempt to work with the owner to come up with a plan or resolution for the business to come into compliance. And that's the, I think, the combination of these three, again, working closely with staff, this is all the authority that we have today, but I think this will go a long way toward potentially reaching a solution where this beloved neighborhood asset will allow to continue to operate. So that's my motion.
I'll second. Got a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. And we have a little bit of board discussion, starting with Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. Beck, I think you answered my question the last, the most recent time that you've had the floor, but I'm going to just be sure. So the magistrate has this authority, not because the county commission, through our own will, has delegated it to the magistrate, but because state statute requires that the magistrate have that level of authority with respect to the fines. Is that right?
Yeah, actually, state statute, it's in Chapter 162. It sets out options, really, that can be done, whether you use a code enforcement board or a magistrate. And Hillsborough County, in their ordinance, has chosen to avail itself of all the options. So it's flexible. And in recent times, we use both the code enforcement board and the special magistrate, is my understanding.
So is there a way for the board, you know, through a process, of course, to ultimately have that final authority rest with us?
Yes, the linchpin is compliance. Once the fine has been given, then, yeah...
Of course. So, Ms. Beck, as you know, every time we brief for a county commission meeting, I always want to know about delegations of authority. This is a delegation that I'm uncomfortable with. It's, to me, just mind-boggling that we, as the elected officials, are not the final arbiters on these issues. And I understand the compliance issue, I do. But as Commissioner Hagan has pointed out, you know, we've received north of 1,000 emails on this. The community is clearly supportive of this. So that's something, I'll defer to Commissioner Hagan, of course, because it's the issue in his district that's brought this to the forefront. But, you know, I'd like to explore what the process might look like to tweak that a little bit. I have a question for Mr. Gormley. Non-compliance with the land development code has been mentioned. Is this a non-compliance related to their zoning? Are they not in compliance with their zoning? Or are there some other issues that they're out of compliance with?
So, Commissioner, the non-compliance was related to both a zoning item and...
So, Commissioner, the noncompliance was related to both a zoning item, and that would be obtaining a conditional use permit for an agricultural stand, and also the site not having gone through a site development review. So both of those items would be things that we would talk with the owner about and identify a path for bringing the site into compliance. There may be some challenges with the existing configuration of the site that could be addressed through a, you know, a potential planned development zoning, for example, to help them reach that point of compliance. So it's really the site design and the conditional use permit from the zoning side, presuming the use would be an agricultural stand.
Understood. And a question for Mr. Barge. If we can work with this owner to come into compliance, is it likely that these fines can be just eliminated or at least significantly reduced?
Yes, it's possible. Once the property is in compliance, we have a lien settlement committee that will hear the request, and there is a possibility that the fine could be significantly reduced.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. It is a wonderful community asset, a much, I trust, a much-beloved place. I've stopped there an occasion myself when I'm in that area at that farm stand. And I think uniformly, people love farmers' markets and want to do everything they can to see them thrive. That being said, I just want to assure the public that no one is shutting down Bear's Grove. We're not even anywhere near that. I know that much has been cited about this extraordinarily complicated legal fact pattern that we have here. I will say that also, it's much of what has been set forward in terms of the farm stand is state statute. It's not under our control in terms of some of the things that have, I guess, been desired. And Mr. Lawrence litigated more or less that state statute and went, you know, through much, you know, went through the property appraiser's office, the Code Enforcement Board, the Value Adjustment Board, magistrates, appeal, circuit court. And each time, it was found that the, you know, in terms of the state statutes, that this was, that Mr. Lawrence needed to do something fairly simple, that's required of everyone, to come into compliance. And that's just to, you know, file for, with this board, actually. We would get a chance to review it. He could do a planned development. Coming into compliance would not mean something at all extraordinarily different than what he's doing at this time. And so these are all things that can be taken already, and that's why I found the motion to be a good motion to second. I also, so there's not the...
There's not big barriers to coming within compliance?
It comes back to this board if there's anything that, for us to approve in terms of a rezoning and that Mr. Lawrence has issues with. In terms of the fees, no one's taking a lien or trying to collect those fees at this time. And as I understand from staff, once compliance comes, those fees are very standardly reduced or looked at at that time, and that would be a time, too, for, I suppose, to look at that. But, you know, I just, again, like to assure the community that, in terms of the county's actions or anything here, that there has, that we are nowhere, anyplace, you know, looking at shutting down Bear's Grove, we'll do everything we can to encourage Bear's Grove and others to thrive in Hillsborough County. So I'll just be supporting the motions as it stands, but, you know, I think we can move forward from here. We'll have some other chances at this board, just through the procedure, but that, this solution has always been there. I wanted to make sure it was. It's something that's just the way the code works, and it's not unreasonable and doesn't require big changes or anything like that to the farm stand.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan?
Thank you. And just very briefly, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Kemp and White for your comments. The situation is extremely frustrating because, as Commissioner White indicated, we are not the final arbiter of this outcome. But the public expects us to have that authority, and they ultimately hold us accountable. So I'm supportive in the future, if we want to consider changing this process. I'm supportive of taking another look, Commissioner White, if you want to suggest that down the road. As Commissioner Kemp said, there is a lot of misinformation. We are not trying to shut down Bear's Groves. I've read multiple emails that the county wants the land, I mean, things like that, and it's just simply not the case. I mean, I believe, when I put it on the agenda, I believe that strongly that this Board has always supported independent mom-and-pop businesses and that we want to save them. We want them to remain here for decades to come. Unfortunately, the owner pursued, as Commissioner Kemp said, a state statute route. And I'm not questioning that approach, I'm just simply saying that that's beyond our purview, and we do not have any authority there. So that's when, again, in meeting and working with staff, felt that there is value in pursuing another route or avenue to help them. And I believe that the motion, what we got on the floor, will ultimately get us there. So with that, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Have a question for Adam. Adam, how long you think this would take for this to be expedited, to bring this project in compliance, working with the owner and with your staff?
Commissioner, we will engage with Mr. Lawrence very shortly on this. If the owner elects to pursue a zoning remedy, that process takes approximately five months from application to decision by the Board. We'd also seek in that time to facilitate any review of their site so that that is a concurrent action rather than letting them, waiting for those to be sequential and drawing the potential resolution out.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just wrap up before, first of all, starting with thanking Commissioner Hagan. I know this is a very complicated issue with the layers of state statutes and legal issues and the previous court cases that have been litigated. And I appreciate your research into all of those levels to bring us a carefully crafted motion, kind of threading between those shoals for what exactly might work to produce the best solution here. You know, as you said, this Board has always supported small businesses and, in particular, small agricultural businesses. So that's not, that's not an issue that, and I appreciate the motion. I do have a couple of questions. If we, if we change the land development codes addressing small farm stands, as part of the motion suggests, so that then some of the compliance is achieved, can compliance be achieved that way, or would they still be penalized for the previous codes under which they were cited?
Go ahead, Adam. So, Commissioner, there are, the potential provisions to our ag stand regulations could play a part in bringing the site into compliance. There is the, there's a use element, a conditional use permit element, and the use conforming to ag stand regulations as exists today. If the regulations changed, that would open up the opportunities for other uses. There is still a site development requirement, and it's one of the violations that the special magistrate cited. So the, looking at our regulations could facilitate the resolution. There are some permitting issues that are still outstanding relating to the layout of the site. We'll say, I think that the two have different, you know, if we're going to look at our agricultural stand regulations, we would want to be deliberate in doing that and bring in the appropriate stakeholders for something that might have broad application throughout the county as opposed to looking at this site in particular, because it's a known element there. So I think that that, that does, I think the two could inform each other, but I think there's a potential path that's more potentially expeditious for this site by looking at it individually.
So that would be like having the owner file a P D rezoning and a site plan so that we could, you know, then get past this automatic farm stand business?
That's certainly one of the options that we would explore, if I guess, maybe.
All right. And final question. Mr. Gormly, you know, I'm aware of a used car lot that is operating contrary to our codes, but because they've drawn out the process of rezoning and asking for continuances and continuances, the fines were suspended in that case. So what's coming to my mind is, once this owner files for a P D, would that suspend the fining business?
Commissioner, I'm aware, sorry, Dexter. I think the two are in different positions. I believe that the one that you're referring to has not yet gone to the Code Enforcement Board or special magistrate.
I see. I see, I see. So they've been postponing it. I get it. They've been postponing it before the finding of the special magistrate. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan?
Yeah, just one last comment regarding the basis for reexamining our existing code. Really, it was twofold. Number one, it may assist Bear's Groves here through the conditional use permit route, but as I mentioned earlier, there are likely other agricultural fruit stands that are affected and fall into this category. So it will, it's not just this one particular case. There's potentially many others, and so that's why reexamining them, there may be value in doing that. So beyond just this particular case.
Thank you. And I think that wraps up board discussion. So we'll take a vote on the motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Kemp's item, item F2. This is regarding directing the county staff to further investigate pet rabbit sales. We have some of the similar staff on the line as well, Dexter, Joe Gross, and also Scott Trupetowski, if there's any questions to, as well as county attorney's office.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Madam Vice Chair stepped out, so at this time, Commissioner Kemp, you have the floor to introduce your item.
Thank you. And it says, "The Board knows it's part of a continuing issue, and if you, for the public and for the commissioners, the staff has revised with updated detail, updated data, on retail sales of pet rabbits in Hillsborough County." We had a report that is now, came to us a few weeks ago and has been changed by staff. The report explains that the staff's initial report significantly underestimated the volume of retail pet sales of rabbits. Sales of rabbits as pets are estimated between, to be between 1,000 and 1,500 annually in Hillsborough County. Staff also found that there is a significant increase in sales around the Easter holiday as reported by residents who spoke at public comment before the Board and as well sent very detailed emails to all of us with regards to the status of their own research into rabbit, pet retail sales. The updated report that the staff made recommends that the Board consider a sales ban during the holiday period. Unfortunately, the county and county administrator report that there's insufficient time to enact a ban in 2022. However, in the meantime, staff should move forward with additional recommendations, looking forward to a potential sales ban in 2023. And with that, I'd like to make a motion directing staff and the county attorney's office to take steps to further investigate pet rabbit sales and involve community stakeholders. This is very important, including the Animal Advisory Committee, who hadn't been involved in the past and hadn't been meeting, in formulating policy recommendations for the protection of pet rabbits and the regulation of pet rabbit sales in Hillsborough County.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hagan, and I'll pass the gavel back over to the vice chair. Madam Vice Chair, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kemp and seconded by Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you. I've been tuned in. And Commissioner White, it looks like you're next in the queue.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, as I'm reading your motion, it does not necessarily ask for a moratorium or a ban on the retail sale of pet rabbits. Is that correct?
At this time, we were initially talking about a moratorium for the Easter holiday. As I understand, we can have the county attorney address that, that that would not be a possibility for this season. But it continues to ask for exactly, actually, what I had asked for before, to look at a ordinance, yes.
But today's motion just asks for staff to bring something back.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I'll support that motion. I'll tell you that I'm pretty certain that I will not ultimately support a moratorium or a ban on the retail sale of pet rabbits. I did support the ban on the retail sale of puppies because of the puppy mill issue in this country, and that's been fairly well documented. I know a lot of these puppies are sourced from areas of the Midwest where dog breeding is, it's treated essentially like a livestock business. But in this particular case, I'm not aware of any sort of a bunny mill issue. This is more of an issue of impulse buying of rabbits and how rabbits are treated once a person takes ownership of the rabbit. The same can be said to be true for other types of pets, even though you can no longer buy a puppy from a retail establishment here in Hillsborough County. Puppies are still sourced through adoption and through breeders and things like that. And people can and do unfortunately mistreat other sorts of pets. And people can and do unfortunately mistreat other sorts of pets and, and don't care for them properly when they get them home. Impulse buying can be an issue with other types of animals as well. Valentine's Day was just a couple of days ago. People might buy their significant other a cute little puppy for Valentine's Day and a few months later realize that, you know, maybe they've bitten off more than they can chew. Christmas time, the same can be said true, to, to be true. You, you have the, the, the pet puppy with a ribbon around its neck by the Christmas tree and come January, February, March, sometimes people realize that they've bitten off more than they can chew. The Easter holiday can be an issue not only for rabbits, but for animals like chicks as well. You can have people in an urban or a suburban area that are given the cute little chick for Easter, and a few short months later, they have a full grown chicken and they have no earthly idea of what to do with it. So what I do support is a strong educational campaign, and I, and I would be willing to vote in favor of a meaningful appropriation of public dollars to administer that campaign and that it not be unique to rabbits. Again, chicks at the Christmas, or the Easter season rather, can be an issue. Valentine's Day, Christmas with puppies and things like that, that's what I would support. I, I just can't get there on an ultimate moratorium or ban on the retail sale of rabbits. But I will support the motion on the floor today and just want the public to know that all we're asking for today is for staff to bring something back for us to consider, and I'm typically inclined to extend that courtesy to a fellow commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Kemp for bringing this forward. I think this will result in a solid, long-term solution. I like the fact that you've included involving the AAC. That's one of the reasons why we have task force to ultimately get their, their input and their recommendations. I know I've championed a number of animal issues through the years, and we typically involve the AAC. There are a couple of things I'd like to, to either see included in the motion, if Commissioner Kemp's comfortable with that. If not, I'm happy to make a, a, a motion after, after this one passes. One, Commissioner White just mentioned, an education campaign. This is really to educate purchasers of the care required for rabbits to be kept as pets. I want that at least to be identified, that that'll be one of the issues that the, that will be looked at. Secondly, because rabbits, you know, many of them are purchased during the Easter and end up being dumped at the Humane Society, what I would like to do, and this is, I've worked with staff on this, this has all been vetted with them, is to provide up to $20,000 to the Humane Society to assist with care, feeding, and neutering any rabbits they receive. And also to have the Humane Society provide staff with the data that they have about where the rabbits are coming from, what conditions the rabbits arrive in, how much their care costs per rabbit, and other important information. So I don't know if Commissioner Kemp's comfortable with any of those or all of those. I'm happy to make that a motion afterward. If not, I think, I think the education campaign and the Humane Society providing data, it may be assumed that it would, it would happen, but I just want that to be specifically identified as a minimum.
And I understood all that was kind of mostly moving forward. We had talked about the education and I'm, and I had known that the, there was a, our staff was looking to, because we can't do a moratorium for this Easter at this time to be up to $20,000 for the Humane Society for the care, and I think all of, all, all those are, I'm supporting it all. I just didn't include it all in the motion, so those are good additions.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Like I said, staff's the one that came up with that number, so they're clearly comfortable with it, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we don't need an amendment because that's, it's clear that that's the direction from this motion? Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'll take that down.
All right. Without further discussion, then, we've got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Please record your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And it looks like we're pretty close to the end. Ms. Wise, you want to?
We are. We're getting there. The last item is item G1. This is to receive report regarding unmarked cemeteries and burial grounds in Hillsborough County. And this was Commissioner Hagan's future issue item, as well as a follow-up from a request he made in 2020, January 2020, before the world fall apart. And so we have Brandon Wagner's here, as well as Dr. Kimerly from USF, but first to turn it over to Commissioner Hagan, perhaps.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. Yeah, a long time ago, I first brought the matter of lost cemeteries to this board's attention. Particular concern was the potential of such burial sites being located on any of the numerous county-owned properties. At that time, the subject swiftly became front and center with the rediscovery of the Zion Cemetery and investigation of lands around King High School. In the Tampa Bay Times story written in, an ominous warning was issued, expect more lost graves. I believe then, as I do now, that we have a moral obligation to see if indeed any of these sites exist on lands we manage, and we owe that to the families and the community as a matter of human decency. The board at the time authorized staff to develop a plan to examine records, documents, et cetera, to determine if any likely sites that would merit more detailed field exploration. Today, I guess it's about two years after, first brought this forward, our staff with the expertise of USF researcher Dr. Erin Kimerly are here to share their findings. So with that, Ms. Wise, I'll, I'll give it back to you. After the, I think there's going to be a brief presentation, I would like the floor again, just to ask a couple of questions of Dr. Kimerly. Thank you.
Very good. And I think first, we have Brandon Wagner, who will introduce Dr. Kimerly, and she will go through her PowerPoint presentation.
Good morning, board members. Brandon Wagner, Chief Administrator for Government Relations and Strategic Services, as was alluded to by Commissioner Hagan. This is a follow-up, update on the activities that USF has been conducting in conjunction with staff on locating and identifying these, these cemeteries. Dr. Erin Kimerly is making the presentation on behalf of the University of South Florida. She's the Executive Director of the Florida Institute for Forensic Anthropology and Applied Sciences, as well as an Associate Professor of Anthropology at USF. She's recognized as one of the most foremost experts in this field of specialized study across the country. And, and as we're all aware, this is an issue that's affecting communities across the country, and this board has taken proactive measures to address this matter ahead of time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kimerly for her presentation.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. I'm very honored to be here and share this research with you. Burial grounds and cemeteries are recognized as important public spaces and links to the past, but we lose track of them all the time. They are, cemeteries are typically, excuse me. Cemeteries are typically defined as a more formal space and have documentation, as well as they're evident on the landscape, whereas burial grounds tend to be less formal and not marked on the landscape. Unclaimed remains typically do not have markers, and in the past, that was true. It's still true today in areas where they're not cremated. So most, if not all, cemeteries have unmarked burials within them. The rediscovery of two cemeteries in 2019 prompted this question as to whether there were additional unmarked cemeteries on county-owned property, and we began doing research in January of 2020. The purpose of this report today is to give you the preliminary status and location of what we found in terms of unmarked burials identified through the survey that fall on Hillsborough County-owned property. We combined spatial data with historical aerial images, a wide range of base maps, including historic, topographical maps, and other county and city maps, as well as research and verification feedback to a GIS Geo Database application, which added all of the archival and historic records about any burial information. Many sources for this research were included. These are primary sources that we then cross validated wherever possible. Next, georeferencing procedures assigned real-world coordinates, available imagery and all of the base maps, and they're brought into a viewable relationship with the modern landscape. And this was through the creation of a secure web application in GIS. What we found were primary sources for 45 additional unmarked cemeteries and burial grounds within the county. The number is 47 if we include two properties that were owned by undertakers, which may have been burial grounds, but there's no documentation as to burials made in those spaces. Of these 14 have geolocation data. 31, we have a general vicinity or some information, but no specific address or geolocation data. Among the 45 burial sites, 14 were historically classified as African-American, Afro-Cuban, or colored during segregation. Three sites included both white and colored sections, and 15 were classified as, as white during that time. As a result of this work, many unmarked cemeteries throughout the county were not actually on county-owned land. They came to light. Historic records are not organized by location or address, and so the only way to identify cemeteries is to comb through all of the records one at a time, put together a possible list of sites, and then work to figure out where they're located. And because so many cemeteries have different names, their boundaries change over time, we wanted to avoid duplication. Once the location's known, we try to assess ownership and then have started to reach out to some of the other entities and agencies that may be impacted by this information. Two of the properties with location data are on county-owned property, the Lewis Cemetery, and a site of a one-acre cemetery located on a 1916 plot map, very near to the John Carney burial. The Lewis Cemetery is a family burial plot described in the 1941 WPA records. It appears on a 1916 plot map. Following their description, we find it located on a current ELAP property. The site may yield, a site visit may yield better options in terms of what field work, if any, may help locate actual burials because it is heavily wooded. The John Carney property was originally 160 acres. He was buried on land inherited by his son, which was later sold with a one-acre family plot reserved. Eventually, that parcel fell into abandonment and was later taken over by the county. Over the years, neighbors have reported headstones were moved, broken, and the possible perceived border has shifted. So maybe that this is in fact the same place, because it's residential and open lawns, field work could help reestablish those boundaries and confirm whether in fact it's the same location or something different. Other sites we found on the properties, not owned by the county, but were owned by the school board, City of Tampa, Aviation Authority, private property, and many of them, the location is still unknown at this time. In conclusion, what this project has shown us is that there's a great need to look beyond compliance archaeological projects to include a more holistic understanding of historic cemeteries, and that must include geolocation data. Work should be done to locate and document additional land titles and tax records that may give more location data. Targeted field work for select sites could include the most appropriate field method, given the landscape. In some cases, GPR is a great tool, but it can also be time-consuming and costly, and white art may be an option if there hasn't been development or construction on the site. We were very focused on Hillsborough County. However, this is an issue for all counties in Florida and every state. So the approach that we use, and I think the action that the board has taken by reviewing this issue in these cemeteries, could be applied as a model to other areas. As of January of this year, there were 1,648 recorded cemeteries in the Florida Master Site File. That's the state database managed by the Division of Historic Resources. It's the state of Florida's official inventory. Only 49% of those were associated with a professional survey. And we looked up for the county, there are 78 recorded cemeteries in that Master Site File, and only 13 or 16% were, had a professional survey. It happens because cemetery data is submitted by different types of individuals, entities, archaeological firms. They may be volunteers and not professional. So there is a need for specific location data and survey data to be part of that as decisions are ultimately made based on what is in that database.
Does that conclude the report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions you have, if I can.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise, is that, is that the end of this presentation?
Yes, it is, unless you all have some questions.
Yes, we do.
And I think you're sure.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Kimerly for her work. I appreciate the initial research she's done to address the possibility of unmarked cemeteries and burial grounds on county-controlled land. It's based on the information we received today. I'd like to make the following motion. First of all, that all the research findings be shared directly with the impacted cities, agencies, jurisdictions, and ultimately made available to the public. Next, that the board authorize the second phase of this investigation, including the use of ground penetrating radar or other ground scanning technology at the two county-owned sites. And lastly, that a final report be brought back to this board, ideally by the end of this year, at which time the, that we can create the working group that, once they have all the information, we, they can have clear direction on where they go from there.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And first of all, I, I want to thank Commissioner Hagan for bringing this item up. I think what you said earlier about having an ethical or moral obligation is correct. I think we have an ethical and moral obligation to see this through and to make sure that we share the results of this with other, other members of, of other governments that, that might be inside Hillsborough County and also with our citizens. I wanted to ask for some special consideration of another area that has come up recently. I have been in receipt of a lot of questions about the area underneath Columbus Drive that borders some existing cemeteries, but there are questions about whether or not, when there was commercial development in that area, whether or not that encroached on existing graves, and even some questions as to whether Columbus Drive itself might go over burial area. So I wanted to ask Dr. Kimerly, because I don't believe that area was part of this analysis. I just want to confirm that with Dr. Kimerly, first of all, that that area was not part of this analysis.
It was, well, the cemetery known as West Tampa Cemetery did come up on our radar, and that's one that we listed as an additional cemetery. Sometimes, over the years, it's been used interchangeably with the name Marty Cemetery, but we believe they're different spaces and were likely adjacent, both date to the late 1800s. And so that parcel north of Columbus Avenue, where, where the northern part of the Marty Cemetery used to be, we think is the most, next to that is most likely where the West Tampa Cemetery was, and that, again, I think dates to the, to the late, or to the 1880s.
So, so given the fact that Columbus Drive is a county road and is in the county's jurisdiction, I, I would like to make a friendly amendment that we add that to the list of areas to be scrutinized in this next phase of this project.
Commissioner Hagan? That's fine. So, so that's included in the motion as a friendly amendment.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Commissioner White?
Thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Hagan for bringing this forward as well, and I think the county has a tremendous opportunity here to pay respects to those that, you know, may have been forgotten to history at this point. We have some educational opportunities as well. I mentioned to Ms. Wise that I think we have some real opportunities in terms of memorials at the sites, and we live in an age where, you know, those memorials might even have something like a QR code affixed to them that someone could scan and read about the history behind the burial site. Even at our ELAP site, I could envision something like a trail leading to a memorial, again, with something like a QR code affixed to it so that folks can really immerse themselves in this history and, and learn from it, and we can pay our respects as well. So Ms. Wise, as we continue on with this, I ask that you consider those sorts of opportunities.
Thank you. And I like the QR code idea. That's something that many years ago, when it first came up, people were, you know, not comfortable with, and now suddenly you go in a restaurant and that's how you get the menu. So I think that's a great idea. Seeing no further discussion, we've got a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote. Thank you.
Motion carried six to zero.
And that takes us, I think, to future items, Ms. Wise?
Future discussion items, and we did note, Commissioner White, unless you wanted to repeat it, regarding the sidewalk on Bloomingdale.
Yeah, I did wish to repeat it and just say that I really hope you'll take a look at it. That's the Somerset Community within Bloomingdale. I actually have two Somerset Communities, not only within my county commission district, but sort of within the same neighborhood as well, just a few miles from each other. So this would be the Somerset Community within the greater Bloomingdale Community.
Thank you. And, you know, I'm, I'm just going to say, we, I know we've talked before about this sort of thing, treading carefully on reprioritizing things, but I think in the case of bringing the sidewalks up to ADA compliance, that's something that would add priority to that area. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to direct staff and the County Attorney's Office to bring back a report on updating the 2008 community plan for Palm River and Park West Village communities.
All right. And if there's no other future items, going once, going twice, we're adjourned.